You are not receiving. Please cut down on feedback. Good evening, everybody. Do you want me to do countdown or we good? Okay, I'm gonna do a countdown really quick. Five, four, three, two, one. Good evening, everybody. I would like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the Brentwood Planning Commission for Monday, March first, 2021. In the interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the public, this meeting will be held electronically pursuant to Governor Lee's Executive Order, number sixteen, thirty-four, fifty-one, sixty, sixty-three, sixty-five, seventy-one, and seventy-eight. Physical presence of the public will be limited, but the meeting may be viewed online at brentwoodtn.gov/livestream. We'll have the roll call of the commissioners. Commissioner Bain.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Dunhu is here. Commissioner Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Pippin.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Travis.
Here.
Here.
Let the record show that all commissioners are present this evening. We will now have the pledge to the flag led by Commissioner Clark.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. We are now going to go through the consent agenda, and all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a planning commissioner member so requests, or a citizen or agenda applicant requests that this be moved to the regular item for just, I'm sorry, the regular agenda for discussion. Item number one is BPC twenty-one oh-two dash zero-zero-one, the revised final plat, Chanois subdivision, lot two thirty-nine, ninety-four seventeen, Smithston Lane, zoning OSRD. Item number two is BPC twenty-one oh-two dash zero-zero-four, revised final plat, Parkside at Brenthaven subdivision, lots one eleven and one twelve, eighty-two fifty-six Frontier Lane, eighty-two thirty-three Glover Drive, zoning OSRD. Item number three is BPC twenty-one oh-one dash zero-zero-four, revised final plat, Parkside at Brenthaven subdivision, lots one seventy-five, fourteen ninety-nine Stephanie Court, zoning OSRD. Item number four, revised preliminary plan for the Allen property, lot eighteen, ninety-five twenty, Split Log Road, zoning OSRD. Item number five, the revised preliminary pla, I'm sorry, BPC twenty-one oh-one dash zero-zero-seven, revised preliminary plan for Delfino subdivision, five oh-two Wilson Pike, zoning R-two. Item number six, BPC twenty-one oh-two dash zero-zero-one, the revised site plan at Brentwood Country Club, fifty-one twenty-three Country Club Drive, zoning OSRD. Are there any citizens that would like to move this item, Todd?
Uh, no, there are not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let's go through the commissioners and see if anybody would like to move an item. Commissioner Bain.
Uh, no, none for me.
Commissioner Clark.
None for me.
Commissioner Krieger.
None for me.
Mr. Dunhu is a no. Commissioner Kaplan.
None for me.
Commissioner Oliver.
None for me.
Commissioner Pippin.
None for me.
Mr. Robinson.
No, none for me.
Commissioner Travis. Commissioner Travis, would I move any items off the consent agenda?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. Commissioner Vitucci?
No.
Excellent. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as it, as presented?
Uh, Madam Chairman, I move that we, uh, accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I will second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Bain to accept the consent agenda and a mo, a second from Commissioner Travis. Please let me know if you're in favor or not. Commissioner Bain.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunhu is in favor. Commissioner Kaplan.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver. Commissioner Pippin.
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis.
Aye.
And Commissioner Vitucci.
Aye.
The consent agenda is adopted as presented. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda.
Madam Chair, before, I don't believe that the minutes have been approved.
Thank you. This is Horn. Mind the sake, let's move back to the beginning of the agenda. And we need a, well, first have all the commissioners had a chance to review the, the minutes from the February first, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes from February first, twenty-twenty-one as presented in our information packet tonight?
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes as, as presented in the agenda tonight.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bain. Do we have a second?
I will second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, and let's go through and vote on the minutes then. Commissioner Bain.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Abstaining.
Commissioner Clark is abstaining. Commissioner Bain is in favor. Commissioner Krieger.
I accept.
Commissioner Dunhu accepts. Commissioner Kaplan.
Accept.
Commissioner Oliver.
Accept.
Mr. Pippin.
Accept.
Commissioner Robinson.
Accept.
Commissioner Travis.
Accept.
Commissioner Vitucci.
Accept.
The minutes are accepted with an abstention from Commissioner Clark. Thank you. Now correctly moving on to the regular agenda. Due to the fact the meeting is being held electronically during this COVID-nineteen pandemic, under the authority provided by the governor, citizens' comments will be accepted electronically. Any citizen who wishes to make a comment may have access to do so via the webcam at City Hall this evening. Item number one is ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero-six, an ordinance rezoning property located at ninety-two thirty Old Smyrna Road from AR to R-two. Mr. Dobson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for logging on. Ordinance two thousand twenty-one six proposes a rezoning of approximately seventy-one acres located on the north side of Old Smyrna Road, approximately one mile east of its intersection with Wilson Pike. The subject property is located at ninety-two thirty Old Smyrna Road. The requested change is from AR to R-two. The proposed R-two development plan includes a total of twenty-one lots, having an average area of two-point-six-eight acres. Allison, there should be a table that details those lot sizes, just for everyone's information. The plan includes a right-of-way dedication of one hundred feet along the entire frontage of Old Smyrna Road for future improvements. The existing stacked stone wall located along Old Smyrna Road will be located in the proposed right-of-way dedication. The project is proposed as a gated private street subdivision. Access is provided by one location on Old Smyrna Road approximately three thousand feet east of Jones Parkway. The plan provides a total of approximately twenty-four hundred linear feet of new roadway. All private streets will be constructed to public street standards for the requirements of the subdivision regulations. Other entrance and amenity features are also proposed, the property of butts. Cloverbrook Drive on the north, which extends through the Brighton Wood subdivision and eventually intersects with Cloverland Drive in Metro. The R-two plan does not propose a connection to Cloverbrook Drive. Individual lots within the project would not have direct access to Old Smyrna Road. You can go to the site plan, Allison, if you would, please. One more. There you go. The lots providing the proposed one-hundred-foot-wide right-of-way dedication on Old Smyrna Road will provide a one-hundred-fifty-foot-wide rear yard setback as required by code. A screen easement located on private property and not required by the zoning ordinance is also provided along the rear of the lots. The existing McComb will be retained and will be situated on lot ten within the subdivision. According to the Williamson County Property Assessor, the home includes an area of about twelve thousand square feet and was constructed in nineteen ninety-four. Several accessory structures and improvements are also located on the property. Included as part of the submittal of the AR concept plan, which illustrates how the property might be developed under the existing zoning standards, the AR concept plan also shows a total of twenty-one lots, all exceeding three acres in area. The AR plan proposes approximately three thousand linear feet of new publicly maintained roadways. No additional right-of-way for Old Smyrna Road is shown. A connection to Cloverbrook Drive on the north is also shown, which could serve as a connection between Cloverland Drive and Old Smyrna Road through established residential neighborhoods. Six lots directly above Old Smyrna Road, um, access to Old Smyrna Road for these lots would be governed by section seventy-eight, four eighty-six A of the zoning ordinance, which requires that shared access easements be provided for lots that front on arterial or collector streets. Old Smyrna Road is designated as a collector street. Um, schools, Allison, there is a spreadsheet in there that shows the schools also. There you go. Thank you. The proposed plan was provided to Williamson County Schools for an assessment of the impact of the proposed development on the schools in the area. Uh, based on Williamson County's review, you can see that upon build-out, which I believe is twenty-twenty-five, Litzkum Elementary would receive eleven students, and Brentwood Middle and Brentwood High would receive three students each. A traffic impact study was prepared and a copy forwarded to Mr. Greg Judy with Neil Schaefer Incorporated, who assists staff with the review of traffic impact studies. The applicant will pay for the Neil Schaefer review per the requirements of section fifty-twenty-nine via the code. Um, the, this slide shows the conclusions and recommendations. I know there's a lot of words, and there's a lot of words on the next slide, too. But, traffic impact, the trip generation estimate is seventy-five percent lower than the city's criteria for requiring a traffic impact study. Two, the daily trips generated will comprise six percent of the average daily traffic on Old Smyrna Road. Three, the AM peak hour trips will comprise approximately three percent of the total AM peak hour traffic on Old Smyrna Road. Four, the peak hour trips will comprise approximately four percent of the total AM traffic on Old Smyrna Road. And five, due to the low trip generation estimate of the proposed twenty-one homes, there is not expected to be a detrimental impact to traffic flow. Uh, and at the site access, the proposed access should include one lane entering and one lane exiting. Several trees in the right-of-way on the north side of Old Smyrna Road should be removed to provide appropriate intersections like detail. The TIS, the traffic impact study, established the background traffic growth by increasing the existing traffic by two-point-five percent annually until build-out in twenty-twenty-five. Traffic volumes were derived using TDOT data collected in November of two thousand nineteen and summarized there at the bottom of the screen. Mr. Judy provided his, if you'll go to the next slide, Allison, a lot more words on that one. Mr. Judy provided his review comments, and, and there they are, and I won't go over them, but he is in attendance here tonight, so if there are any questions about any of those there, um, he, I'm sure he would be happy to answer them. That list is also included in your staff report. The proposed ordinance was approved on first reading on February eighth. The community meeting was conducted at the library on February twenty-fifth. The public hearing is scheduled for March eighth. Second and final reading is scheduled for March twenty-second. And we are requesting that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval of ordinance two thousand twenty-one six to the Board of Commissioners. The next two pages, the next three pages, is a summary of the community meeting, and then you have the ordinance, the legal, and the legal description, uh, beginning on page thirty-nine, if anybody printed this, uh, of your, of your packet. And that's all I have for that one.
Thank you. Do we have a representative from the applicant who would like to make a presentation, please?
Yes, Madam Chairman. This is Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith, uh, here representing Growth Park Construction. Appreciate the opportunity to be here before you tonight. Just going over a lot of what I'm gonna go over, uh, but I'll kind of reemphasize a few things, uh, in addition to myself. Again, we've got Caldwell Lucas here with Growth Park. We also have our traffic engineer here to answer any questions. He's gonna address a few regional traffic, uh, comments that were made in the informational, uh, meeting. We also have Brian Eccles here with us tonight, too, to address some of the deed restrictions that we're gonna talk about briefly as well. So, uh, again, just going over the location of, of the site, just to see how it fits in context with the surrounding neighborhood. Jeff's touched on this a little bit, but wanted to point out a few things. You can see the site there in the middle, seventy-one acres located right on Old Smyrna Road. You've got Annandale to the west, you've got Cloverland Acres to the north, Brighton Wood to the north, Sheridan Park, and Cottonport plantation as well. And all those, as you can see, those properties to the north are zoned, are two. Annandale is, is zoned OSRD, so, uh, very feel, very much we're kind of in context, well, at least what's on the border of us there. I think maybe you have question where Snead Manor is located relative to this property. You can see it just to, uh, the southwest there of a property on the other side. So just to show you the proximity of that development to, to our property and the Sensing property also to the west. Also, you can see the proximity to the, to the Davidson County, uh, line as well. So again, just wanted to kind of go over that in, in context with where the site is located on a regional basis. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please, Allison, if you don't mind. Again, I'm just looking at the existing site and some of the features that, that were important to us as we looked at the layout on the property. Obviously, you, you've got the stone wall out that, that's out in front of Old Smyrna Road that's very important, and, and we understand the importance of, of preserving that. But you can see the total seventy-one acres. Most of the property, uh, the, the tree lines, relative to the tree lines are on the east side of the property, so that's something that we paid, uh, very close attention to, that I'll touch upon on, on the layout, making sure that we could, uh, hopefully maximize the preservation of those as, as we laid this out. And then the existing house you can see is right there in the center where site, which pushed that a little bit further north, but that's the existing home. You can see the driveway that goes up to that. Again, this was an important feature that, uh, Growth Park wanted to preserve, given the size, you know, of the home and, and the character of the home. And as you'll see in the layout, the, the entrance really kind of focuses in on that. If you don't mind zooming out a little bit there, Allison, and, um, the low point that you can see, we do have a jurisdictional one there in the southeast corner, that is, the low point of the property. So that is where most of the range is, is going on that site, and you can see, as you look at the master plans and, and the AR plan, you see we've kind of organized the, the lots around, around that. No access across the street that's making us, you know, line up to that, so we've got a little bit of freedom where we can put that, uh, access along Old Smyrna Road, so where it best fits for, for the development. Go to the next slide, please, Allison. Again, as, as Jeff pointed out, this is our AR plan, again, uh, pointing out the, the twenty-one acres, as you can see, all those are, are three-acre minimum lots. Uh, we did show the connection to Cloverbrook Drive, understanding that that is, that is a possibility. We, we do know that, and we're gonna address this as well, that, you know, the planning commission is about connectivity, so we, we did show that as an, as an option on our property, understanding that that is a possibility that, that, that could happen. Um, you'll see kind of in the middle, there was a question that came up in the neighborhood meeting. I wanted to point this out before I forgot about it. You can kind of see the existing house kind of ghosted in there, in the center there. There was some comments of, well, why we, that we should be able to preserve that within the three-acre development, but we just wanted to show this, to show you where that kind of landed, uh, and, you know, with the, with the layout that, that we have. If you don't mind zooming back out again, Allison, please. Again, as Jeff pointed out, uh, we do have six lots fronting on Old Smyrna Road. Uh, you can see lots nineteen and three would be accessed by the, the entrance going into the development, and then per the access ordinance, you can see that you would have two additional accesses coming out to Smyrna Road, with shared access between lots one and two, and twenty, and twenty-one there. So, uh, you would end up having basically three, three points of access. The things to kind of keep in mind as you look at this compared to the other plan, um, particularly if you look at the east side of the development, we did kind of locate those houses when the, within those building envelopes, due to kind of the setbacks and the lot width requirements under the AR, it kind of pushes that building envelope further back, uh, towards that. So that was something that it's going to be enforced as a result of, of your technical requirements, uh, for the AR. And we showed some clearing to the back, which you usually would expect with the, you know, with, uh, with, with improvements that are made to the back of the lot. Also, to the west there, uh, if you don't mind, Allison, if you go back there, too, zoom back out, you'll kind of see the close proximity of, of the setbacks to Annandale as well. And again, these, these are three-acre lots, so those houses wouldn't be that close, but it just gives you an idea what the building envelope is. But you would have kind of the, the houses a little bit closer on that, on that front setback, uh, to those lots. So again, the one thing we certainly understood with, with this corridor is, and through previous policy, is this is kind of the measuring stick for what the most lots could be developed under, under any scenario. We certainly understood that, but we thought because of the importance of Old Smyrna Road, the sensitivity to that view shed, and keeping that rural, that we could do a much better job on the layout, uh, going to an R-two zoning scenario. Um, and I'll show you, too, there was an R, there's been some R-one discussed about that going to two-acre lots, but the primary reason we've gone to the R-two is because of some of the, the setback flexibility that it gives us to push the buildings, push the houses off of Old Smyrna Road. So if you don't mind, go, Allison, to the next slide again. And again, you, you obviously saw this, so, again, some key things to, to point out, obviously, uh, I think the character of Old Smyrna Road. With this plan, we are dedicating a hundred-foot of right-of-way that, uh, we do understand that, you know, there has been some long-range plans about the possibility of improving Old Smyrna Road. This hundred-foot reservation gives you the flexibility to do that while also preserving, uh, that, that stone wall. It's also going to push the, the lots even further back, the setbacks further into development, which we feel, again, gives you a much better character along Old Smyrna Road as you're, as you're driving, rather than have lots fronting it. We've got lots back off that. In addition to that, we've incorporated a fifteen-foot permanent landscape easement along there to, to help screen it. If you remember, on the AR plan, there was six lots, I believe, uh, fronting, you know, onto Old Smyrna Road. Again, this starts to limit that because we put some detention down in that corner that we feel we can capture some of the water. We've included the pond with the fountain with the gated entry coming in there, really trying to create a sense of entry and open up that view shed, uh, coming into the development, incorporating some open space. So in reality, we really only have nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and lot one, and I guess you could count lot two, uh, even with that detention area in between. So one less lot, you know, up there not fronting the road, uh, and I think much, much more protects that, that view shed corridor. Again, as you can see, the, the entrance comes in focusing in, uh, on the house on the west side. Again, I think you'll see as compared to the R-two plan, it, the buildings will be pushed up a little, a little bit farther away. And then more importantly, on the east side, again, we, uh, we showed the houses on there and showed the opportunities for the tree preservation, uh, that that gives us with the flexibility of, of, of the R-two front yard setbacks on that. So again, trying to preserve those edges a little bit, those tree lines along there, to be in context with the neighbor, neighbors, even though these are larger lots than what's surrounding us right now. So again, it's important to us to have at least two-acre lots, you know, on here, so we maintain that. Again, if you go to the next slide, Allison, if you don't mind, which, which basically brought up the question, why don't we ask for R-one, you know, on here? What you see in red is the setbacks that I think rest of the development meets the technical criteria of the, of the R-one. But the setbacks would obviously push the buildings closer to Old Smyrna Road, which, uh, we would, we have concern as well as far as protecting the integrity, uh, of, of, of that corridor. So that's the reason that we, we did not, uh, ask for that zoning, uh, to allow us for, for that flexibility. If you don't go, mind going to the next slide. I know there has been some questions. I know, uh, a couple of planning commissioners brought up some, uh, questions about the connection to, to Cloverbrook Drive. And I've got, uh, Brandon Baxter with our office that just wants to point out a, a few things to consider as, as we're discussing that, and some reasons why we did not make those connections. So Brandon, do you want to be there to jump in for just a second?
Yes, thank you, Randy. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for, uh, having us on here, and I'd be happy to go through a few items. I know Jeff, uh, in this, in his staff report, uh, summarized the, the traffic study and the findings of both the study and of Greg Judy's review, so I'm not going to, uh, belabor any of those points. Uh, I'm gonna focus on what Randy wanted to, to look at really, which is the, the connection there with Cloverbrook Drive, and, uh, in a larger context, how this site fits into the area. You could see between Cloverland Drive and Old Smyrna, uh, you know, the traffic volumes, there's, there's a large disparity in traffic volumes, uh, over on the Church Street side of Cloverland Drive, uh, really in the middle of the screen. Uh, the daily traffic volume on that road is, is seventeen thousand vehicles a day, and that's funneling traffic, uh, into, uh, the Maryland Farms area from, from multiple, from multiple destinations. Whereas on Old Smyrna Road, you've got a, a daily traffic volume in the range of three thousand to three thousand five hundred. The disparity in those two volumes, uh, we have not done a, a deep dive into, uh, you know, what the traffic volume might be on that connection, but just the disparity between them. Uh, you know, it, it's reasonable to think that there would be some, uh, you know, some pattern change, uh, perhaps of people using another connection to try to get, uh, off of the busier road and, and to another route that's not as busy. Another thing that, that came to at least my, my mind while reviewing this site and preparing the traffic study was, uh, the different context between Jones Parkway and Cloverbrook Drive. Jones Parkway was built, uh, as part of the Annandale neighborhood, and it was designed as a collector road. Uh, it was intended to make that connection. There's, there's calming features like the circular intersections and roundabouts, uh, but then also the way the road was designed, there's curb and gutter throughout, there's pavement markings that, that limit or I guess constrict those lanes in that space a little bit more. But then even behind the curb and gutter, you've got, uh, features such as street trees up close to the road, landscaping, that all makes that space feel smaller, and, and influences the drivers to, to go a little bit slower. Um, along Cloverbrook Drive, when, when I, when I looked at that road and drove through that neighborhood, uh, you know, Jones Parkway was opened, I believe, in around two thousand seven, uh, which is, which is pretty recent. Uh, and, and certainly, uh, took advantage of a lot of the, the modern, uh, design initiatives and practices that we, that we adhere to. Cloverbrook Drive was in place, uh, you know, even before the, the mid-eighties, uh, so it's been around for over thirty-five years. Uh, it's a more traditional subdivision that has a rural section with ditches, uh, large, large front yards with the houses set pretty far back. Not many street trees, not many things up near the road to confine and constrict that space. So it feels, even though it's a dead-end road, when you drive it and you drive Jones Parkway, Cloverbrook feels like the faster road. Um, you know, those were a few things that came to my mind when, when looking at this area and, uh, when working with Growth Park Construction and with Randy, uh, on, on the plan and the R-two plan that you see before you that, that does not connect. Uh, as noted, like, you know, in the, in the traffic study, and I think as noted in Greg's review, from twenty-one homes, the, the traffic congestion or, or traffic volume generated- review, uh, from twenty-one homes, the, the traffic congestion or, or traffic volume generated by that was not a significant concern, uh, in this area, just because that's pretty low, especially for the acres. We've got a, a good, a good ratio there of, of just not generating a lot of traffic to that land. I'm happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time after the presentation, and I think Randy, at this point, I'm going to have to turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Randy. Uh, Allison, if you don't mind, go on the next slide, please. Thank you. Again, uh, the deed restrictions have been brought up as, as something that, uh, that Grove Park was willing to put in place primarily because there wasn't concern about, I know expressed early on when we had some discussions about this, is what if these guys walk away, uh, from the development and, uh, another developer comes in and zoned this R2 and they just want to develop under the R2 zoning criteria, which kind of ties everybody's hands, but, uh, they have put deed restrictions in place. Uh, Brian Echols, I, I wanted in attendance just to address these, uh, as well as to answer any questions that, that you might have relative to these, although even though the C says you, you aren't necessarily taking these into consideration, but with this, but, you know, I think the property owner has just as much interest as maintaining the integrity of Old Smyrna Road as what everybody else does and was willing to put these in place. And I believe these were recorded today, from what I understand, regardless of whether we achieve this zoning or not on, on the property. So Brian, is there anything you want to add to, to that, if you're there?
Yeah, I would just say that, um, the, uh, developer came to me, I, and I represent Grove Park, and, uh, both the developer and the owner were very concerned about the natural, uh, attributes of this property, that it not be overdeveloped at any time. And they asked me how to achieve that, and I said, well, a restrictive covenant declaration would be the way, way to achieve that. And I think there was a concern on both the owner and developer that that would somehow be unwound, uh, at some future point. Um, I have literally put in that, um, assuming this is approved and there are twenty-one property owners, all twenty-one property owners would have to agree to that, plus the city of Brentwood, and because this is eternal, uh, any successor government to the, uh, city of Brentwood, uh, if that were ever to happen, would have to agree to that. So I have tried to draft this as tightly as possible, and as Randy points out, uh, this was recorded today. It's irrespective of anything, uh, that may be approved or disapproved with respect to the, uh, this particular effort.
Thank you, Brian. So, uh, Allison, if you don't mind going next slide, just, just kind of wrapping this up, and I know Caldwell wants to say a few things. Can I just highlight some, uh, some, some benefits that, that we feel that come along with this plan as compared to, to the AR, uh, plan and, and just touch a few. And again, reemphasizing again, just, uh, we do, do feel pretty strongly that with this alternative plan, we're doing a better job of, uh, protecting that, that view shed along Old Smyrna Road. We, we don't have the lots fronting there, the, the homes are set further back, not just from Old Smyrna Road, but from the perimeter as, as well. We've got the existing house that can remain, much better sense of, uh, sense of entry coming into the development, the road and the, and the lake, uh, to the right. But we do have the dedication of a hundred foot right of way that comes along with that that allows for the improvements of Old Smyrna Road, um, enhanced landscape. Uh, again, I think we can do a much better job on preserving some of the vegetation along there as well. So my dog's just barked, I hope you didn't hear them during all that. I mute myself real quickly, I've done my best to keep them quiet. Uh, but Caldwell, did you want to add anything while representing the developer while you're, while you're here?
And then, no, I think you've done a great job expressing, uh, where we're coming from and, and our vision for the property and, uh, you know, we appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much, and we're here to answer questions.
And I'm going to mute myself so you can't hear me, hopefully my dogs will shut up here in a second.
So if, uh, we are now at the point where we will have questions from the commissioners for the applicants, and then we have, I think, some people, uh, in the city hall annex who would like to speak on this item. Commissioner Bain, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Clark, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions at this time.
Commissioner Krieger, do you have any questions?
No questions.
I have one question, uh, and that is who, it was very hard to read the deed restrictions up there. Who are the parties in that deed restriction at this time?
Uh, the, the parties, uh, who made the restrictions are the current owners of the property. That's the only people who could put restrictions on a property are the owners.
Okay. And so their restrictions are binding, we can't actually read it, it's very small, uh, their restrictions are binding on whomever buys the property, is that correct?
That's correct. They are perpetual and are one with the property. Um, I did, as I mentioned, I did add that it could be amended, modified, or otherwise changed only with an instrument recorded, executed by each successor and interest of every portion of the land. That would be, once again, a potential lot owner, if there were twenty-one lots, each lot owner would have to agree to that, and the city of Brentwood would have to agree to that.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaplan, do you have any questions?
I just have one question. Uh, will this property also be subject to the community mailboxes?
Yes, yes.
Yes, it would be.
We've got a, a, an oversized pull-off, uh, a little bit bigger than Omen, uh, quite a bit bigger than Omen, um, on the north side of that wet pond, uh, that we've got planned. If you could zoom in a little bit towards that focal, uh, point folly, that'll be our mailbox, uh, uh, bank.
Perfect, thank you, that's all.
Commissioner Oliver, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Pippen, do you have any questions? Uh, Commissioner Pippen, your microphone is off.
Yes, in the extreme northeast corner, that sort of sail-shaped triangle parcel right there, is that part of, uh, of lot number five? Or is that, is that even buildable, or is there a restrictive topo there?
It is part of lot five, you just don't, uh, Commissioner Pippen, just don't have a viable building envelope, you know, back there, and I don't, I don't think we'd want to push the building back that far. Anyway, it's just a part of an odd configuration of the property.
Okay, yeah, so he's buying forest.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Travis, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Vitucci, do you have any questions?
None at this time.
Thank you. We'll now move on. Todd, are there citizens in the annex who would like to address this item?
Yes, we have, uh, three residents that would like to comment, and I'll ask the first one to come up and state their name and their address.
Thank you.
If you would like to.
They don't want to comment, it's just three. Oh, boy.
Hi, I'm Deborah Fisher, and I am, uh, I live at sixty-five seventy-five Cloverbrook Drive, so we directly, uh, but the rear, uh, the north end of the development, and so we're at the dead end on Cloverbrook Drive. So, um, um, what I wanted to bring up was, uh, I've raised two kids in this neighborhood, they're now in college, so they're not there now, but, um, what we realized, um, in living in this neighborhood is how isolated, uh, it was and how difficult it was for our kids to get to other kids' houses. I mentioned at the community meeting that, uh, walk path would be terrific, um, going into that maybe reached one of the, um, either around the perimeter or that reached one of the roads so that our children in this northern Brentwood area would be able to safely, and us two, I suppose, um, get to the new Wendy Hill Park. That is not even a mile, we can pretty much see it from where we are. Right now, to get to that park, if, when it's developed with its walk paths, we would have to go all the way out to Cloverland Drive, which you just heard has increasing traffic, and there's a new development also by Grove Park being developed at Jones Parkway and Cloverbrook, that's going to be putting more cars on that road, and turn left and then go all the way back and drive down through Jones Parkway to park at something just to get there. And it really is not safe for our children or us to walk, um, along the ditches on Cloverland Drive to go across. There's no other walk path. We do have a walk path when they put in Sheridan Park, uh, and that's zoned R2 as well, between Brightonwood and Sheridan Park, and it's simply a grass-covered area that you can walk through back and forth. And so I want to, I know that this is a rezoning, so I'm just planting the seed that, um, there are a lot of kids in this neighborhood, they're going, they go to school with people in, you know, these surrounding neighborhoods, but mostly a walk path would be a really wonderful thing to be able to actually reach, uh, Wendy Hill Park without having to drive. Or I guess as kids do trespass over other people's property, which we don't want them to do that either, we'd rather have a dedicated space. So that's really all. Um, I know we are not interested in a cut through, obviously, on Cloverbrook as a road. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there someone else that would like to speak?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, we have one more resident.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman and, uh, commission members, I am Steve Kroger. Uh, live at six oh one six Bell Reeve Drive in Brentwood. Uh, I've lived in Brentwood for about twenty-five years, and I first wanted to say thank you for the work that you all do. I know there's a lot of time and effort put into serving, and we just appreciate what you all do and your service to the community. I'm here to say, there's been several plans for this property. I believe that proposed plan is the best plan, it's a good plan for the property, and I'd like for you to encourage you all to approve this plan, make the recommendation, positive recommendation tonight. So again, thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Kroger. Todd, is there anyone else there?
Uh, that's, that's all that would like to comment this evening, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now, we need a motion to accept the, I guess it's a motion to positively, uh, I don't exactly where you're, a motion to recommend rezoning to the city commission in a second, and then we will have our discussion.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept the change in designation from AR to R2 for this piece of property.
We have a motion to accept the change in rezoning from Commissioner Bain, do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, we have a second from Commissioner Travis. I will go through with our discussion. Commissioner Bain?
Yes, I just wanted to say, you know, I, I think the, the layout of the property, the, the less, uh, amount of access to Old Smyrna Road, I, I like the layout of this plan, uh, pulls things closer to the center and, and saves, you know, as was mentioned, a lot of the tree canopy, uh, to the west. Um, certainly not in favor of, uh, a cut through through Cloverbrook Drive under, uh, a different scenario. I think that would, uh, lead to a lot of traffic issues, uh, over on Old Smyrna Road as it would be used as a cut through. But I, I would like to say, you know, if, if the property owners, I understand, um, you know, people wanting to access, we've got the new park, uh, going in over there on the sensing property. So if there was a way to, you know, uh, go, go around the boundary of the property, if you will, with, um, you know, some kind of designated pedestrian walkway, it doesn't even have to be paved, but to allow people, um, you know, a little bit more access, uh, to that park, uh, from some of the subdivisions as it was mentioned. Um, it's still a little bit dangerous, uh, even from the corner of that property to the sensing property, uh, with, with little to no shoulder on, uh, Old Smyrna Road, but, um, I, I'd like to see a little bit of creativity around that if, if possible, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Bain. Commissioner Clark?
Madam Chair, correct me if I'm, correct me if, if, if I'm wrong here, but, uh, we're voting on whether or not to recommend, and only voting on whether or not to recommend a zoning change to the city commission.
That is correct. We are not, we are not voting on this plan, the plan would not be binding, and the AR plan as they presented will also not be binding. It is merely rezoning, yes, sir.
Yeah, correct. So that's all we're voting on. I have, uh, no objection at this point to recommending that, realizing I'm, I'm a little bit vague in how the covenant's going to protect this property from having twice the number of homes on it once it's re, once it's been rezoned. Um, but you know, I, um, right now, I'm, I'm sort of in, in favor because, um, it looks like it's a piece of property that needs to be developed and, uh, and brought into the city, so it's under some control of the city, and we can, uh, control what eventually happens to it once that we are submitted with the proper documentation of how they plan to build it out. That's all I have to say.
I just want to make two comments there. It already is city property, it's already in Brentwood, unlike the other, the next item, so this already is in Brentwood and is zoned AR. Um, the beginning of the Brightwoods and Sheridan and Cloverland Acres are all, um, in Brentwood, and then it becomes metro, uh, partway through those subdivisions. Um, and then also if, uh, if our city attorney could maybe give us a little bit information on exactly how binding or who is this, you know, uh, if we rezone, are these covenants enforceable?
Absolutely. And, and Mr. Echols did a great job describing the, the private issue with this document, and again, the deed restrictions are a private, private agreement, as they've been filed as, as they mentioned, um, and it is a private document, not reviewed by the city, not approved by the city. The city is not a party to the deed restriction, and the city does not enforce private deed restrictions. But again, Mr. Echols described how, how it would work from a private perspective.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clark, did you have any further questions on that?
Uh, no ma'am, just, just the fact that we are voting only, as I said earlier, to, uh, change the zoning and nothing else at this point in time. Thank you.
That's correct, thank you. Commissioner Krieger?
Uh, no comments at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunhu. Uh, I have comments, but I, I have several, so I will give my place up in line to Commissioner Kaplan and will come back to me if I don't, uh, in case there's some redundancy. Commissioner Kaplan, any comments?
Uh, my only comment is, I'm only really a fan of changing zoning when there's no upzoning, and since they can, you know, build twenty-one lots on this before or after the zoning, then I'm, I'm a fan of what they're doing. I think it looks a lot better, a lot cleaner than the previous plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Oliver?
Yeah, just simply say I'm a, I'm a fan of rezoning, I'll, I'll reserve, you know, further comments, uh, about the layout when we see a, um, an initial plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Pippen?
I will diddle what Commissioner Kaplan says, and that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Robinson?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Travis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first of all, twenty-one lots equals twenty-one lots, and I think that's a very big point for us to remember. Um, we have said many times in planning commission meetings, each, each individual planning commission item is considered independently, it doesn't bleed over. But I think the planning commission and the city commission have sent a very clear message about upzoning, and we, we have not been upzoning. So, uh, I'm very glad that this twenty-one lots that they could build is only twenty-one lots that they want to build. Uh, I think that's a major plus, and I'd like to thank the developers for that. There's been a lot of work that's been done on this. The Thursday session, for those who didn't have a chance to watch that, we, we covered a lot of ground there. Uh, this right here that's on the screen right now, we asked for, and we got to see the, the trees and how they would be more protected over on that east side, which I think was very important. Allison, could you go back a few slides? We had the one that had the, uh, red dot- We had the one that had the red dots and the blue dots showing where the lots would be. Yeah, that. We asked for that. And I know that took a lot of effort. But I think that really shows too how things lay out and how it keeps some of the houses right off of Old Smyrna Road. And I think that's a major plus. So I'd like to thank everybody for their hard work on this. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for leading rousing discussion on this. And I think that we have done what we need to do, and I support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vitucci?
I support the plan. The only question that I will have, that I raised once before, is going to be connectivity in the plan that they're representing, that they're showing for the... That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I did have a couple of comments. The big one, though, is that I'm hesitant to rezone. I know there's deed restriction in place. It's not necessarily enforceable by the city or is not enforceable by the city from what our attorney has told us. And I am still concerned that there's the potential that we could end up with more than 21 houses on this 75 acres. Also, I feel like they put the connector road in there to show us what might happen if we left at AR. But the city really doesn't have a preference for connecting Metro to Brentwood and making that a corridor. So I think that that would be unnecessary. And I know they talked about that part of their layout was because they felt constrained by the length of the, the rules for the length of the cul-de-sacs that would possibly occur in the AR. However, there is in the city codes that they can ask for a variance on that length. So I think that that's a restriction that they could work around. I do appreciate, though, that they took the time to show us the building envelopes on the right-hand side. The setbacks on the west side, I don't, do we have that chart, Allison? To show the rear yard setbacks on the west side, keeping the back of those homes from the back of the homes in Annandale would actually be 75 feet if we left at AR. And if we zone to R2, it would only be 30 feet. Or if it's at the boundary development, it would be 35 feet as opposed to the 75 feet. So the homes will actually be further away from the homes in Annandale. And if any that back up onto the northern boundary also would be further away if it was left AR. Are there any other comments from the City Commissioners? Okay, hearing none. We will go through with the vote for or against our abstaining. Commissioner Bain?
For.
Hey, Janet, excuse me, Madam Chair. Point of information, I think Commissioner Vitucci was trying to say something. Where are you, John?
Your mic is off.
What I mentioned was the fact of the concern that I've heard and raised once before by the city managers, city commissioners, is connectivity from one subdivision to another. There's a lot of strong belief that that should be continued for the safety of other people because the fire department uses that as a subdivision to another. You know, I approve of the plan. And there'll be other discussions that we'll probably have on it in the future. But connectivity, I think, is still an important issue for the city.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. We'll resume, we'll go back to Commissioner Bain for your vote, please.
I approve.
Commissioner Clark?
For.
Commissioner Krieger?
Approve.
Commissioner Dunhu does not approve. Commissioner Kaplan?
I approve.
Commissioner Oliver?
Approved.
Commissioner Pippin?
Approved.
Commissioner Robinson?
Approved.
Commissioner Travis?
Approved.
And Commissioner Vitucci?
Approve.
Excellent. So the vote has the Planning Commission recommending rezoning to the City Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Onto Agenda Item Number Two, Resolution 2021-29, A Resolution to Annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Brentwood, Tennessee, said territory being located south of location of 715 Vernon Road, south of Notaway Lane in the Terramore subdivision, adjacent to the existing city limits. Mr. Dobson?
On January 25th, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 2021-10, which calls for the scheduling of a public hearing for the proposed plan of services for property located at 715 Vernon Road, abutting the current city limits. The subject property lies within the city's urban growth boundary. The resolution is a result of a request for a voluntary annexation of the property into the city. The public hearing before the Board of Commissioners will take place on March 22nd, 2021. The next step in the process involves the Planning Commission's endorsement of the proposed plan of services and the annexation of the property and provide its recommendation back to the Board of Commissioners. Please note that the Planning Commission is not being asked to endorse a rezoning plan at this time, only the plan of services and the annexation itself. According to the Williamson County Property Assessor, the property includes a total of 25.26 acres. There is one barn having an approximate area of 1,700 square feet currently located on the property. The property is zoned Municipal Growth Area 1 or MGA 1 by Williamson County. The property owner will request that the R1 zoning district be assigned to the property. Consideration of the zoning on the property occurs separately and is proposed to occur prior to final consideration of the annexation resolution per the schedule outlined in one of the next slides. Water and sewer service for the property is provided by the city. The existing infrastructure that is currently stuffed to the property from the Terramore subdivision. Water service area was transferred to the city from Nolanville College Grove in 2006. The submitted concept plan shows five lots, all exceeding two acres in area. Concept plan is non-binding related to the development of the property and is proposed as a guide to eventual development. Development of the property must comply with the technical standards of the R1 district if it is annexed. And there, oops, she changed it on me. Allison, can you go back to the schedule? There is the schedule. Of course, tonight, your reviewing the proposed annexation will provide a recommendation back to the City Commission. On the 22nd, the City Commission will conduct the public hearing for the plan of services. And then the schedule goes for the rezoning. So on April 12th, the Board of Commissioners will conduct the first reading of the ordinance to assign the R1 zoning district to the property. The required community meeting is tentatively conducted by the applicant on either April 27th or 29th. On May 3rd, the Planning Commission will provide its review and recommendation regarding the proposed zoning back to the City Commission. The public hearing is scheduled for May 10th. Second and final reading is scheduled for May 24th. And also on May 24th, the Board of Commissioners will consider the proposed annexation resolution, which includes the plan of services. Staff requests that the Planning Commission forward an endorsement of the proposed plan of services for the property and annexation to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Do we have representatives from the applicant?
Yes, we have. This is Wes Harris with Reagan Smith. And I don't have a whole lot to add from what Jeff already said. As he mentioned, utilities are stuffed to this property from the Terramore development. And the applicant is looking for an R1 zone with five lots. I will say that the applicant does own this property and plans to build his personal residence out here. So that's really one of the reasons why he's looking for just these five big lots. And we're in agreement with the staff report. And I'm open to answering any questions.
Thank you. We'll go through the Commissioners. Commissioner Bain, do you have any questions?
I do have a question. Is there a slide that shows what could be done on that property? I'm sure it's MGA 1 classification versus the R1 in terms of building lots?
The MGA 1 in Williamson County. Somebody's feedback, so I can...
Need everybody to turn off their mics, please.
Okay, great. The MGA 1 zoning district in Williamson County allows for one acre lots. One house, one acre. Very similar to what the Goll property was. It was also zoned MGA 1. But MGA 1, while it is similar to R2, it doesn't, it allows additional accessory uses as far as apartments and mother-in-law cottages and things like that. It also does not, the county also does not regulate Airbnb's. They are expected to collect the required hotel motel tax and send it back to the county. So yes, there is some differences there.
Thank you, Jeff. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Bain. Commissioner Clark, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Krieger, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Allison, can we go look at that slide that showed where McEwen came through? So I know that through the Terramore, there was something about them paying for part of McEwen or some sort of easements. Is there any, Wes, is there anything with McEwen going through this property, do you know?
I don't know of anything specific to McEwen other than what we have shown represents what you see on the screen here, which is the best available data that we have as far as the alignment.
So in terms of being monetarily responsible for any of that development, it would not be on the property owners? Is that correct?
We are not proposing to build any part of McEwen, no ma'am. The dedication of the land would probably be as far as we would extend on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaplan, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Oliver, any questions?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Pippin?
No questions.
Commissioner Robinson?
No questions.
Commissioner Travis?
No questions.
No questions.
Are there any comments from the Citizens' side?
No, there are not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion to endorse the proposed plan of service and the annexation to the Board of Commissioners?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
We have a motion to accept the staff recommendation and forwarded from Commissioner Bain. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Travis. I will go through and see if there are any comments. And then after the comments, we'll vote in reverse order. Commissioner Bain, any comments?
No comments.
Commissioner Clark, any comments?
No comments.
Commissioner Krieger?
No comments.
I would just like to compliment the applicant and the owners of the site for coming up with a smaller number of homes type request for rezoning and for asking to be in the city boundaries. Commissioner Kaplan?
No comments.
Commissioner Oliver?
No comments.
Commissioner Pippin?
No comment.
Commissioner Robinson?
No comments.
Commissioner Travis?
No comment.
Vitucci?
No comments.
Okay, and voting for recommending the annexation of the plan of service to the city. Commissioner Vitucci, how do you vote?
Four.
Commissioner Travis?
Four.
Commissioner Robinson?
Four.
Commissioner Pippin?
Four.
Commissioner Oliver?
In favor, excuse me.
Commissioner Kaplan?
I'm four.
Commissioner Dunhu is in favor. Commissioner Krieger?
I'm for it.
Commissioner Clark?
In favor.
Commissioner Bain?
Four.
Excellent. The Planning Commission then recommends the endorsement of the plan of service and the annexation to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, too. Onto Agenda Item Number Three, BPC 2102-007, the Revised Building Elevation and Site Plan for Sullivan Dental at 5015 Harpitz Drive, zoning C4.
Smallwood Nickel Architects, PLLC, requests approval of a revised plan that proposes the following. Number one, the brick type and color locations are being modified to be light field brick with darker accent brick. Two, the cast stone signage panels on the tower at a long Harpitz Drive elevation have been modified to a brick accent panel. Three, the balcony on the second floor, east and north elevations of the tower has been eliminated. The storefront door on the north elevation has also been eliminated. Four, the guardrail on the west elevation has been modified from painted galvanized metal to prefinished metal guardrail system with a glass infill, that's on the balcony. Five, two windows have been removed on the west elevation. Windows have been added and their sizes modified on the south elevation. Window sizes have also been increased on the east elevation. Six, a sloped sidewalk to the southwest entrance door has been added to accommodate deliveries. And seven, the solid waste enclosure has been modified to accommodate rollout trash cans instead of a dumpster. We have four conditions of approval. Number one, the proposed wall signage location is too high and above the main roof line of the building. Lower the signage, include dimensions and rendering of the actual sign. All proposed signage design shall return to the Planning Commission for review and approval. Two, change the material for the solid waste enclosures from canvas to a metal to match the building. Provide revised plans that reflect the change for staff review. Three, show the installed locations of water meter box and vaults and sewer service line, including the cleanouts on the plans. And four, a site plan shall be vested for a period of three years from the date of the original approval. We also have 12 standard requirements, and we are requesting that the Planning Commission vote to approve the proposed minor site plan revisions subject to the requirements of the staff report.
Thank you. Do we have a representative from the applicant?
Yes, ma'am. This is Brandon Holcomb with Smallwood Nickel Architects.
Yes, would you like to add anything or make a presentation of any type?
Realistically, Jeff covered it pretty well. These are just modifications that the owner made throughout construction that we wanted to bring to your attention. Mainly, the brick colors have been modified to add a little more contrast. And other than that, really just those simple modifications. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. We'll go through with questions. Commissioner Bain, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Clark?
No questions.
Commissioner Krieger?
No questions.
Commissioner Dunhu has no questions. Commissioner Kaplan?
No questions.
Commissioner Oliver?
No question.
Commissioner Pippin?
No questions.
Commissioner Robinson?
Brandon, can you tell us what the brick colors were previously? What we're moving toward here? Is it, it looks black and white to me. Is it, what would you...
Yes, so the previous colors, I believe that is the originally proposed that you're seeing on your screen now, were less contrasted. It was more of a charcoal gray and white. Unfortunately, there was just not a gray brick out there that we could find. So they went to a darker brick that, it's not going to be black-black, but it is definitely more contrasted than what the original proposal was.
Well, I don't like it, but I don't think I can vote against it, right? So there we go. Well, I don't like it, but I would, I, I don't think I can vote against it, right? So, so there we go. Thank you.
Commissioner Travis, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Vitucci, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Todd, do we have anybody in the annex? I would like to speak.
No, we do not.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the proposed minor site plan revision subject to the requirements of the staff report?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Bain. Do we have a second?
I will second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll go through with discussion. Commissioner Bain, any topics you'd like to discuss?
No discussion.
Commissioner Krieger?
No discussion.
Commissioner Clark?
No discussion.
All right, Commissioner Dunhu has no comments. Commissioner Kaplan?
No comments.
Commissioner Oliver?
Hi, just one simple comment. Thank you for coming back with these minor site changes, because we sometimes get these after the fact, so I appreciate you doing this proactively. Thank you.
Of course.
Commissioner Pippen?
No comments.
Commissioner Robinson?
Likewise, I do appreciate you coming to us with this. I wish there was another solution. I feel like the, the look of Brentwood is just a little too black and white these days. That's all you see is white painted buildings and gray, dark gray painted buildings, but I do understand the availability issue, and thank you.
Commissioner Travis?
No comments.
Commissioner Vitucci?
No comments.
Thank you. We'll go through with the vote then. Commissioner Vitucci?
Yes.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pippen?
Aye.
Mr. Oliver?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaplan?
Approved.
Mr. Dunhu has an approval. Commissioner Krieger?
Approved.
Commissioner Clark?
Approved.
Commissioner Bain?
Aye.
Excellent. So the planning commission approves the proposed minor site plan revision subject to the requirements of the staff report. Thank you, Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you. You all have a good night.
Moving on to other business, we have the monthly security reports on February of 2021.
For the month of February 2021, our escrow, I mean, our letter of credit balance stands at $11,665,678.60. The escrow account stands at $3,516,693.90. The total of those, of those two numbers is $15,182,372.50. And it's a difference of minus, it should be a minus there, $50,000. Not as much as months previously, but it's still, it's still a good, a good, a good step in the right direction. So, and we ask that you approve the security report as published in Agenda Quick.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the monthly security report?
I'll make a motion. We approve the monthly security report.
Thank you, Commissioner Bain. Do we have a second to the motion?
I will second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We'll go through with the vote. Commissioner Bain?
Approve.
Commissioner Clark?
Approve.
Commissioner Krieger?
Approved.
Mr. Dunhu approves. Commissioner Kaplan?
Approve.
Mr. Oliver?
Approved. Approve.
Commissioner Robinson?
Approved.
Commissioner Travis?
Approve.
Commissioner Vitucci?
Approve.
Thank you. The security report has been accepted. Under other business, are there any reports from anyone that is on a, another panel or committee, Commissioner Vitucci or Commissioner Krieger?
Yes, the tree board organization that I volunteered to be on. Arbor Day celebration was going to be the one, the one of Saturday in the month of March. It's now going to be for an entire week. Starting March 21st is going to be the kickoff. And we'll be starting at the Brentwood Library, and there's going to be a lot of communication out from the city on Nextdoor and through the Brentwood Facebook. But it has a plan for the entire week, starting March 21st, ending on March 27th. And hopefully, some of you will be able to attend some of those sessions there. And we're giving away free trees on the first day, so if you need any seedlings, come by and pick one up.
Thank you. Mr. Vitucci, we appreciate your report. Commissioner Krieger, do you have anything from the history board that you would like to report?
The only thing is, we do now have a 360 of Boiling Spring Academy that you can go online and, and walk through the academy and click on things. We also partnered with Williamson County Schools, and there is a virtual field trip to Boiling Spring Academy that's available. Another one, Citizen Lee Braswell is interested in documenting all the spring houses that are in the Brentwood area. There are some that we know, you know, the library, Ravenswood, the Prim property. Some of them are very obvious, but if you know of one that's on a property somewhere, if you would just send me an email and let me know, I will press it along to her, and she's interested in possibly making a a book out of all of those and make them available to the public.
Thank you, Commissioner Krieger. We have some more administrative information. Ms. Dobson? Your microphone is off.
Sorry. Under administrative information, we have copies of the Planning and Co.'s monthly report for January 2021. That should say January on the slide there. And copies of the March 2021 calendar. And as always, if you prefer for me to send you an electronic copy of that, I will be happy to do that.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Mr. Dobson?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Mr. Pippen?
Good meeting, Commissioners and staff. Thank you very much. Is there any other business? If not, then without objection, this meeting is adjourned.
Have a good week, everybody.
Thank you all for listening. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Don't forget to, don't forget to go get your COVID shot.
Yeah.